Dear Lord, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this opportunity to serve you, Lord. And thank you for this opportunity to serve the people of this county, Fayette County. Pray, Lord, all those out there that's hurting because of sickness or agreement, Lord, we pray that you might be with them and be with them at all times. They call upon you for support and help. Help us this day, Lord, make decisions according to thy will, that all things we do might be keeping with your will. Go with us now, this death is a gift before we fail, Lord. In blessed and in not, only in precious name, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The word of the Lord.
We'll call meeting, Lord. Yeah, Bob did send Tony's crap, so he's drought.
I need a motion to approve the bids. Tell me that.
Say it.
All in favor? Need a motion to approve the minutes?
Say it.
All in favor? Got that down.
I see him, Cor. He'll be here in just a few minutes. I'm gonna go grab her bill.
What'd she say? Kenny?
He'll be here in just a few minutes.
I heard a man in a car.
yearly bids. What's yearly bids?
Asphalt, car, rocks.
We got the coil supper coming up for a second. That's our one. Well, that's good. You can go to that one time, lady. That's good. Ain't no politics. Said, Bob, just eat, drink, be merry, and get ready to get up and walk out.
Is that free drink, ain't it?
Oh, yeah. I didn't go there.
I like to run away in that, but I don't give a picture.
I don't think you're gonna see that picture.
I know, man.
No.
I'll just carry on with you.
When is September?
That ain't over a deal, surely.
When is September the 23rd? Except next week, ain't it?
What is?
Three shots.
And I'll be out on the 23rd.
What day is the 23rd? Next week?
No, she said. She said.
Next Tuesday.
So when, so we're gonna wait, we're gonna wait for Scott to come, then we're gonna go to that position. We might just go ahead to the house and get what I need.
Man, you know.
But it's, I mean.
Scott, you ready?
Man, hey, I thought one day last week I was ready too.
Okay, you wanna give an explanation about the executive session?
It's gonna be your legal issues side of the airport.
Okay. Now the motion's going to executive session. All in favor?
For about how long, Scott?
Twenty minutes.
How you doing?
How you doing?
Good, y'all.
We're getting where you the same lead is here. Try to run paper with law. Turn it down low and we're gonna go home.
Leave me, leave me my.
I got anything. Just this bid.
If y'all got any bids, I'll try to separate these out.
You would do it.
Y'all don't wanna have any bids?
Broke my apple.
Yeah, we under as much pressure at law as we can.
Really? How's your world of business? Weather's been pretty. Weather's been pretty.
Rusty's showing her tail right there. They play it huge, they don't play it all day.
Your grand son on that time?
No, he's still playing baseball. He played last year, and he said he's gonna send out this year to work baseball and then start back football. They don't play. The youngest one likes football, but he knows. Yeah, he's tough, but maybe he's just. He just turned down his reading. But whatever, he always big, and he told a football. Thirty-five yards. That may like it too, major piece of real big. That's right. You can't just want to. Oh, yeah. And I just got watching football game, and I'm sitting there fearing on about my best mate, or something. He said we seemed better than that, and I was like, oh, George, I think it was. And I said, and I kept telling what was going on. He said, check. Well, I've read stories, certain stories, draft story Friday night on my. I'm having to do radio, I had a bird's game, so I went to Elvis' pride. They, I went to Elvis' pride Friday night, and them and why, so I called two schools out of town and passed out cards, and I left, and I went to, yeah, I had a bird's game. And yet there was a start to say, it was twenty to nothing when I left. The basic theory on it. They were good next year. That quarterback's tenth grade, and they got a little table bag named Clyde.
They always have their little plans.
Yep.
Something that were feltful with.
Yeah, but, you know, everybody good in their years are terrible. But this year, they kind of just, they're just getting through, getting through the problem, if they get playoffs. I was moved by the mail, and they had a little thing, and wife, and challenging. Sometimes, later, so I could, the leader, I could do it. I didn't know I could do that. And, uh, uh, later, I made it to do it. And me, you worked out, and you're in. Spend your grace time. Now, we're, there are a lot of them all around.
It's just a long.
I mean, I truly, a lot of what I get, I try to go to the right.
No, not today. Not today, I'm just still laughing.
Then there comes that kid kitten. And I'd say, the stupid fair couple with the golf team, you know. I just had to watch that. I've been able to scan, how was that, on the occasion, letters. That didn't get the time, the co-writer was still working. And I just picked up an email, he said, he might need to get started on it. A deposit chance. It's, it, I know problems. I was going to score, and I just took pictures back in the front. And, uh, and sent it in, and it'll, by the next day, it's, it's in there. Like I built up your board. It's worth five for me, I doubt, you know, instead of writing, writing like that.
We're ready. We're ready, man.
About two more minutes, I thought.
Our chairman.
I'm not sure yet.
Yeah, that ain't right.
Chairman's got the official time.
I can't be chairman anymore. He's showing you his authority, boy.
Now, Kenny, you just wait two more minutes. I know you want your job, babe.
I got my job back, man. Where about that? Mine's over with.
You kept the money, did you?
Yeah.
Just let him have the authority. Boy's gonna be rough on us this winter, 'cause he is now, ain't he?
Gonna be a bad one. Feels good out there, man. Takes three hundred sixty-seven days like this.
Take my life, super. I bet this winter, we're gonna have to move the roof up here, we are.
Nine fifty-nine. When I come to chairman of the best again, it's a change. Five o'clock on the Friday, it'll be a change. Monday will be ready for it. And figure, boss, if I can't suppose I come, then I can.
Special word.
All right, Mark, ten o'clock, yes?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman, open, open our annual bids. First bid is crushed limestone. First bid is impound materials LLC.
Is that consistent with seven?
There's several items.
Seven, man, crush?
All, all of it, the different sizes of rock.
It's all the same.
Within. You get that off the camera.
Everybody can hear on YouTube.
Y'all want, y'all, y'all want, don't get me tickled. Y'all want, you want me to read them? Just, there's several of them, or y'all wanna just look at them, or?
You can mic, you can mic us a copy of them, and we'll get out of here. Y'all making decisions while they're big time with me.
Okay, y'all want me to read them? There's several of them. What I'm gonna recommend, is just open the bids, and then we'll table them. And at the next meeting, I'll come back and make a recommendation.
You got a lot of land, ain't you? Only have a bid that you could bid?
It, well, that, no, actually, there's several different sizes of stones. And we got a delivered, a delivered price, a picked up price. So there's several, there's several cost factors in here.
There ain't no point going over all of them.
I'll just give these to Ms. Amber. We're, we're gonna leave a copy just this last page. Has the. Has the prices.
Of course, they will, sir.
Next bid is Vulcan Materials. Got bid bonds in place. Give that, I need the first one. Next bid is Rogers Group.
Now be careful, Bob.
I think that's.
Bob, cool, isn't that funny?
Yeah. Actually, I think that's a co-mix beer. I think that's a co-mix beer. Those are all the bids, Mr. Chairman. Come on, make copies, and we'll give them. How many copies do we need?
Just two.
They start gasoline station for this. Gasoline, okay.
Give us a talk, and that'll be on the real map, huh?
More petroleum?
More?
We just don't have it over there, desk up here.
Yeah.
The markup on unleaded regular gasoline, point one four eight. On diesel fuel, markup point one four eight as well, as more petroleum.
Zero one point.
Point one, zero point one four eight. Havison Petroleum LLC, home from Alabama. Point zero nine nine, unleaded regular gasoline, home road number two, diesel fuel. Point zero nine nine as well. Home to petroleum. Thank you, Mr. Bob. Next bid, H.L. Martin Company Incorporated, Hableville, Alabama. Point one three three nine, regular gasoline, diesel fuel, point one three three nine as well. H.L. Martin. Next bid, Midstates Petroleum Company, Vernon, Alabama. Point one five for regular gasoline, home road number two, diesel fuel, point one six. Miss, that's bid state. Those are all the bids, Mr. Chairman, for the, for the field. Co-mix. I believe this is gonna be a co-mix, I believe, I believe this, we'll check this. Yeah, we'll see. Co-mix, uh. I'll let you open up to, and I'll go ahead and look at this one. I believe this is gonna be a co-mix bid. It is.
Bob, I think they'll show up another time, yeah.
Well, this is the table. It's getting dangerous over there.
First bid, Wiregrass Construction Company. There?
Wiregrass.
Wiregrass Construction Company. Per ton at plant site, ninety-seven dollars, ninety-seven point zero zero. Job site, Marion County, one hundred and twelve dollars. That's wire grass.
That's what we need, ain't it?
Next bid is AAP. That's advanced, that's. Have you ever been using our ring?
Oh, is it?
Yeah. That what we've been using?
Yeah. Are you with advanced?
Yeah, that's a lot better than we have.
It's glued, glued to bed inside the embroil. It won't, it's glued. It's glued to the embroil on inside.
Uh, per ton at plant site, eighty-seven fifty, eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents. Um, FOB job site, Marion County, ninety-eight dollars, ninety-eight. Advanced asphalt products, Jasper, Alabama.
Go ahead and take that.
Has only two? Co-mix. Uh, this is done construction. I knew this was a lot easier.
This is done.
Done construction, okay. Unit price per ton at plant site, ninety-nine point zero zero. Job site, Marion County, one hundred and twenty-four point zero zero.
Getting a good bid for the hog, ain't it? I hauled it for that.
Only five dollars a ton. Those are all the co-mix bids, Mr. Chairman. Well, all right. I appreciate y'all for being nice, and letting me know if anything you can do.
All right, y'all in right or not? Well, have a good day, y'all. Yeah, y'all too.
Next bid, metal pipe. What is it?
Metal pipe.
Metal pipe.
I don't know, all these sizes, damn.
For the metal pipe, just a discount, percentage discount off the price.
Oh, just a discount.
I actually.
Maybe.
First bid, Harvey Covert Company, Cleveland, Alabama.
Cleveland, Alabama.
Cleveland. Uh, discount percentage FOB job site, uh, Marion County, thirty-six percent. Discount percentage FOB plant, thirty-eight percent. For aluminum coated steel pipe type two, uh, FOB job site, Marion County, thirty-six percent. And FOB plant aluminum coated steel pipe type two, thirty-eight percent. That's Harvey Covert.
He's gonna have to go with that, just.
Don't put all with him.
That wouldn't fit it, but.
No, it's in Cleveland, that one. That's something, he's, we've gone from Harvey before.
Yeah.
He wants his always, hog, especially, but.
Yeah.
Plastic truckload, truckload, yeah.
It just doesn't work for us.
No.
Contact Construction Products. Burnham, Alabama. Home. Contact.
Contact.
Contact. C-O-N-T-D-C-H. Uh, discount percentage FOB job site, Marion County, thirty-three percent. Discount percentage FOB plant, thirty-six percent. Uh, aluminum coated steel pipe type two, FOB job site, Marion County, forty point two percent. Um, FOB plant for aluminum coated steel pipe type two, forty-two point two percent. Those are all the bids, Mr. Chairman.
Did C and G get a bid?
Did not bid. We didn't get a bid on, from, from, from plastic pipe either, and, and I don't know why that happened. I don't, don't understand that.
No bid on plastic?
Well, we got one bid. We're checking back to make sure that we hadn't, there's not, we checked the mail this morning, too, before we came up here, so, I don't know, sometimes vendors forget. You know, I, and I don't know that that's what happened, but, but we're, you know.
They had no bid on it. I think you got stopped by a little of that.
Did they even, we have a plastic, we have a plastic?
And we've got some options, you know, we can, if we, if we feel that those prices aren't where they need to be, we can obviously reject and rebid it. We just need to evaluate everything, look at it, and then I'll make a recommendation to the next meeting, you know, considering all the factors.
No recommended color taken, wait to give it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't. But they, she did talk to them, and they just, you know. Um, first bid, traffic signs, Jacksonville, Alabama. You know, I can read, I mean, there's not a lot of them, but don't need to read, read the cost of all these posts.
I don't, that's just posting.
Posting aluminum sign blanks. Anybody wants to look at them? Traffic signs, uh, Jacksonville, Alabama. Next bid, Vulcan signs, Foley, Alabama. That's Vulcan signs. Next bid, custom product, corporate, custom products corporation, Jackson, Mississippi. Next bid is David Easley, GNC Supply Company, Atwood, Tennessee.
What is that in a sign?
It's a sign. Sign, sign post, aluminum blank.
All the crack. This is. Little better.
Yes, sir, Kenny?
Those are all the bids on sign, sign blank, sign aluminum blanks. Okay. This is, um. Plastica. Last.
I'm in a bowl of tea. Okay.
Harvey Covert Incorporated, Cleveland, Alabama.
This is plastica. I think it's a plastic, I have a plastic. Harvey, Cleveland.
Okay, I want a bid, Mr. Chairman.
I want a bid on plastic pipe. Would you get one?
Traffic strapping, traffic markings, and pavement markers for various county roads.
We don't have those things up in our bids, so I ain't wish bidding.
Move it out along.
He's working out with you.
Those are traffic company incorporated, those are Alabama.
Oh, woman has a platform herself, now they. I don't buy them in years, they have one big missing.
There again, we've got a lot of different strippings and different types of paint, and I'm sure y'all don't want me to read every one.
That's not the only one you got?
We, no, sir, um, we've got one other bid, which is.
Old dark.
Peak pavement marking, this is old dark here.
They side four, that ain't on that here.
Where are you going?
One more, last one. I think so. Uh, yes, sir. Here's our bids. One final bid, gentlemen. This is crushed sandstone.
Well, we gotta get that going.
Run Brothers Tuscaloosa, Alabama.
Trying to get that maybe, you know, rest of the year and then this winter, good.
Marion County rock. Size B, eight fifty, fourteen fifty. Mr. Chairman, that's all the bids, I just recommended our opinion, we're gonna bid.
Thank you. Hey Mike, how are you gonna figure on this plastic corporate, you gonna look at last year's price?
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll factor in, you know, availability, and, and there's some terms in our bid that require delivery made within a certain timeframe, and we'll evaluate all that and. See what's, what's gonna be the best interest of the county.
Then we got this, uh.
Yeah, I mean, there, there's several factors, I mean, at the end of the day, you know.
The Missouri didn't choose the bid.
Um, what he's saying, it don't make, this don't make our, our specification, we can go bid, we'd bid over.
There's some terms and conditions in the bid that require certain deliveries and certain quantities, and, and, and we want to make sure that we can comply with that.
You know, that was, oh, you know, it was something over the.
We had, we had to catch it. We had some issues with delivery, yeah.
You know, that was hardly graphic, none of the, they got a load.
But we'll, we'll look at all those factors and I'll have a recommendation.
Don't forget to track.
Well, how long have we got? We're gonna start first next month, we got this month.
October first.
We got this this month to deal with, who got. Do you know something?
I know something next week, I'll, I'll evaluate them this week, have a written recommendation to the commission. Anybody else got anything? This week.
Next week.
Next week. Monday, as I said. Nine twelve, Monday.
Five.
Drive motion to adjourn.
We've got that.
All the flavors.